It is Tuesday, July 14th, and this is the Management and Internal Services Committee. I'm Connie Malier, Chair of this committee, and we have Gary Richardson here, our Vice Chair. Let's start with a prayer and invocation. Dear Lord, thank you so much for this beautiful summer day, and thank you for the blessings we have in this country, including the right to assemble and to govern ourselves. Help us as we make decisions this morning that affect our neighbors and the citizens of the county, and some of these, some of these decisions are not easy, but please guide us and be sure our actions are based on truth and in fairness. In your name we pray, amen. Please join me for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance.
This is the flag of the United States of America. The republic of which stands. A nation, God, visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a quorum and need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Thank you. Do we have any changes to the agenda, Scott?
Not to my knowledge, Madam Chair.
Last month, we struck something, I believe it was something of yours, Mr. Blanchard, is that coming back?
Dark fiber.
Okay. Okay. We have nothing on the consent agenda and no presentations that I know of. Let's get right into debate. Mr. Johnson, what do you have for us this morning?
First item we have for you are service agreements. These are normal service agreements that we typically do from year to year. These two are with Columbia County Cares and Child enrichment. These are from the Commissioner's discretionary funds, and staff will recommend approval of these two service agreements.
Yes, sir.
This was the discussion before the end of year. Is this the new budget year? Is this the old budget?
New budget year.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Hope so. Move to consent. Thank you.
The next item we have for your consideration is Resolution 20-24, many of the fee schedule for Columbia County community events. As you know, there's been a lot of discussion about graduations at Evans Town Center Park. The Board of Education held a very successful graduation there, and now we're getting inquiries from a couple of different colleges wanting to do graduations there. So, the staff was tasked with coming up with a graduation rate. We just wanted to come up with some rate to be able to work with our local schools, to be able to make sure we covered our cost. The amount that we've come up with, $1,500 for a four-hour block of time, is enough to cover our costs. We'll still work with the, with the schools, allowing them to use our table chairs, fencing, LED screen, and those things, but, but there is enough money there to make sure we pay all of our staff and make sure that everything is taken care of. So, staff will recommend approval of Resolution 20-24, and being a fee change, it'd be, it'd need to go to debate for two readings if you're so inclined.
To the question, this is for any schools that want to use?
It's any school, but it's, but it's, but it's restricted to schools. So, we would allow the public schools to do it, the private schools to do it, if it's for a graduation. We had Georgia Military College talking to us, Augusta Technical Colleges is planning an event at the park, so it would be any of those schools. But if SELL, our charter school, decided they wanted to do it, they would qualify. But it's not for school systems to use it for other things. If they wanted to have a reception, or they wanted to have some sort of concert or whatever, then it would revert back to the regular fee schedules, only for graduation ceremonies.
High school weekend, four hours, that doesn't, doesn't cover them, so it'd be a day rental, is that correct?
Typically, so the actual, we're charging for the event itself, we're going to allow them to set up, because we leave the park open pretty much while we set up, it's just a matter of setting some chairs out, and then we would close it down for the event itself. But in, in speaking with the superintendent, this is a much lower fee than they've been charged elsewhere, and they have no problem renting it for multiple days or tying things together. We'll work with them on that. We're not gonna, you know, if, if they're on the schedule for eight o'clock on a Friday night, it's gonna be very difficult for us to get anybody in there, you know, from, at four o'clock on a Friday to get them out by eight, so they'll pretty much have the day.
All right, and that will move to our debate. So, moved. Internal Services.
The first item I have for you is the agreement with Columbia County Community Connections. This is an annual renewal that we present. As you may be aware, the Community Connections program is funded by grants, and their grants are reimbursable. So, we several years ago agreed to front them some funding to help them operate while they wait on reimbursements, and we fronted them $225,000, and they pay us an annual fee of $10,000 for use of these funds. The staff recommends renewal of this agreement.
Move to consent. Bring out one thing. It said Judge Flanagan oversees the court. I don't know if that needs to change?
I saw that, too. We'll change that. It's a typographical error. It'll be, it'll be Judge Evans.
They're moved. Next.
The next item is the annual contract with the CSRA Regional Commission for the DHS Coordinated Transportation Program. They pay Columbia County for transporting our citizens to and from the senior center. The amount of the contract for this next year is $19,138. Staff recommends approval with authorization for the chairman to sign the contract.
They're moved. I do have a question. With COVID going on, is there less, less mileage, less folks going to the senior center?
There has been, yes.
Does our fee go down based on that, or is it just a set fee for the year, no matter how much is used?
I think they do pay per person, per trip, right, Jeff?
Next. Technology Services.
I've got a couple here. The first item is a road name change for Buff Road to Clear Sky Drive. Buff Road is off of Bel Air France Road, and there's only one property owner at the very end of the road, and they've requested that that be renamed from Buff to Clear Sky Drive. Staff reviewed it, they met all the, all the petition, because there's only the one property owner there, so staff is recommending approval of this change.
Yes, that neighborhood off of Buff, or they didn't have a say in it, or no, they were a little bit against. Is that a non-issue?
Well, they don't have any properties that front on Buff Road.
Move to consent.
So, moved. Next.
Next item is an agreement with Trimble for a Global Navigation Satellite System base station. The county has a GPS base station that sits on top of Building C. In essence, it's used there for anybody, surveyors, engineers, people like that, that need survey grade for any plans they might be working on. Rather than it just be limited to the, to using one base station, the more base stations you have access to, the more accurate your reading is going to be, in terms of bringing you down to sub-centimeter accuracy. So, if we're using just our base station, we're, we're limited. By working with Trimble, and that's actually the manufacturer of our GPS equipment, we get access to their network. Like, when you're driving along in your car, the more GPS satellites your car can see, the more accurate your reading's gonna be. So, we're basically getting into their network in exchange for them being able to use our base station as part of that network, if that makes sense. So, basically, it's just an exchange of services, so there's no money that changes.
How do they make, how do they support their?
They sell equipment. So, we purchased our equipment from Trimble Incorporated. Staff recommends approval.
They're moved.
My next item is Payment Card Industry Data Security Standards Program Policy. So, PCI DSS is the, the industry name for that. It's an international standard that anyone who accepts credit cards, develops applications for credit cards, you name it, they're supposed to abide by these regulations. We have a number of systems that use payment cards. You can pay for your water bill with a credit card, other systems or other services you can use credit cards for, but we don't currently have a PCI DSS policy. Now, having the policy itself does not necessarily mean that we automatically become more secure. What it does is it makes us, it does a couple of things for us. Whenever I have to answer a questionnaire related to cybersecurity, they always ask if we have a PCI DSS policy, because that's one of the areas where you have the most attempts at fraud. So, us having this policy and then a program to go with it, where we are maintaining inventory of all of our equipment, we're making sure that our vendors that we deal with are PCI compliant, all that helps us going forward with our cyber insurance rates.
They're moved. Next.
All right. Next item is somewhat similar. It's a security incident response policy. Again, this is one of those questions that I get quite a bit on those, on cyber insurance questionnaires. If we ever have a breach, what do we do? This policy mandates that we need to have a process in place in order to be able to respond to that. There are various industry recommended steps that you need to follow whenever you have a security breach. It involves law enforcement, county attorney's office, notifications to various people, how the staff responds, the, the documentation that they're supposed to keep throughout the breach, and we don't currently have a policy as that we have to do this. So, this policy is in here as a, it's kind of a breakwater, if you will, to say, yes, we have the policy and the program behind it, the procedures behind it are going to ensure that we have everything in place if we ever have a breach.
Will it take a lot of intensive training for the staff? Is it a big shift from what we already do, or are you just taking what we already do and put it in, on paper?
We're taking what we already do and putting it on paper. The staff is familiar with what they need to do in terms of a breach. This gives us the legal cover, if you will, that we are doing, as opposed to me being saying simply, oh, yes, staff knows what to do.
Move to consent.
They're moved. Next.
Next item is the Annual Support Agreement and License Agreement for Munis Software. Munis obviously is important software. You've heard our auditors talk about it. It's the software used to keep track of all of our financial transactions. We have an agreement with them already, and this is simply our annual payment that we are getting authorization to pay.
Move to consent.
They're moved. Next.
Next item is the Court Agreement for IAS World Software. This is essentially the same as the previous one, where asking for authorization to pay the $148,060, pay for annual support maintenance for the tax commissioners and tax assessor software.
Tax Commissioner's Office pretty much owned the new program, but the assessors are still migrating, is that?
They are migrating, yes, sir. They'll be fully implemented in late October, early November. They're in the process right now of doing intensive training and testing of all their data. Just between the old system and the new system.
I know the Tax Commission run in dual or whatever. I guess they're off of, just on the new one.
They're fully on the new system now, sir.
Move to consent.
They're moved. Next.
My next item is agreement with Walpert for CityWorks-related hardware and software services. Walpert is the company that was originally contracted several years ago to implement CityWorks software. You've heard me mention CityWorks before. It's used by a number of our departments, like Roads and Bridges, 311, Stormwater, In Order to Track, well, basically to do asset management and work orders. One thing we have not done in the past is have a contractor work with us on maintaining servers. CityWorks is a very complex solution, and it's developed a lot of tie-ins with our ESRI GIS software. Now, I have a very capable GIS department. I've got a lot of faith in them, and my GIS manager said, we really need this to make sure that we get on the right track and can stay there. That's why this is a one-year agreement, because once we're on that right track, staff's gonna get trained up, and they'll want to evaluate year to year. But this is a new thing Walpert is doing, offering these services, and we'd like to participate. Cost is $38,400, and GIS is provided for this in their operating budget.
They're moved. Next.
Next item is for Mainline Data Center Equipment and Services Agreement. We've had a long relationship with Mainline. We've been using them for the last 14 years. However, their contract ran out, so we did an RFP to see if there was anybody else that wanted to offer those services. Mainline was the only respondent, and they do have a, they cover a lot of work for us, all of our virtual software, or our virtual servers, the managing operating systems, they manage those, they service equipment that we have in the data center. We've procured equipment through them to go in the data center. Staff reviewed this. Spent about $330,000 with them last year, and there's not a dollar figure tag to this item, but that will vary from year to year, depending on what our needs are. Staff will not exceed budgeted expense in order to.
You have a budgeted number out there, but.
It's budgeted in the operational cost of IT.
They're moved. Billy Clayton, he might be spending more money than you today.
I swear.
He might be beating you. It's good to have you back with us, Billy.
It was my goal to give him an easy meeting here today.
Next.
All right. The last item is with Gentry Fund LLC. This is a dark fiber IRU, and it's only for one strand of dark fiber. You might remember their name from the last meeting, because they did procure some other services for us with leasing space in our, our POP, that fiber from their office to the POP, and this is them simply extending what it is that they're.
With a question, does this, somebody's house that looks around the Bass Drive or whatever?
My understanding, and Harold Sparrow is here, he could clarify this if we need to, my understanding is that they're a startup, they're, they want to come into the area very slowly. They're actually local people, and they want to practice. They've got a three-year agreement instead of the 20-year agreement that you usually see, so they're testing the waters, but they want to make sure that they can offer fiber to folks that they know in the community.
Same on a versus a 20-year?
It, the fees are usually open to negotiation for the non-recurring cost. It's mandated for the, the monthly recurring cost, but upfront, depending on what their needs are and what we're willing to pay with, we have leeway there.
Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Pray?
Isn't that enough?
There's plenty.
No, ma'am, I'm, I'm good to go.
Please stop.
He spent a million, he's bringing in $5,000. What a deal.
Yeah. All right. Being, seeing nothing else for, for those, from those departments, do we have any legal matters?
Mr. Driver's not here today, but we don't have any legal.
Right. Staff, staff reports. County manager.
First one we have is your personnel savings for 2019, 2020 fiscal year. You can see that we exceeded our budget goal by over $800,000 for total savings of 1.1 million. We were able to, you know, use this money to be able to cover some of our COVID time, but now that we have access to CARES funding, it looks like we're gonna get it reimbursed. So, we had enough to cover it, but it looks like we're gonna be getting a lot of that back, so we're working on that now, and, and some other things the CARES Act's gonna reimburse us for. We're, we're currently poised in phase one to get a little over $7.5 million if we can show that we spent that much. Working on that.
I'm sure they'll report it in the news.
I'm sure. Yeah, that's right, yeah. I saw some really good reporting of COVID money in the newspaper.
Yeah, we'll put some people's names out there. Let's see. Third and second person.
The next one, yes, ma'am. The next one you have is just personnel savings so far for this year. You know, we, we put in a budget goal of $350,000. We actually use that as a balancing number to kind of, you know, help us, because we know we're gonna experience salary savings, but with the climate that we're in, and how long it's taken to hire employees, and the, and the kind of the turnover, it's, it's going up quickly. So, we're already at $50,000 of our $350,000 savings. There's no doubt in my mind we'll have another million-dollar year. That's good and bad. I mean, that's budgeted money you're not spending that's gonna go back into the general fund, or go back into fund balance that we can use for other things, but at the same time, you know, we'd love to break even on these personnel savings and, and make sure we have enough people working, because you got a lot of people doing extra work for people that, you know, that, for the vacancies. So, I wanted to give you that report.
Do you have anything else? Internal Services report?
The first report for your information is the year-to-date budget report. This is for the end of our fiscal year, June 30th, and I have listed here some of the major funds. Don't get too excited when you look at the excess column, because we still have a good bit of work to do. Usually takes us through the end of August to get everything recorded and posted.
There's still some costs to come.
There's still some to record.
Okay. They're not next month, but probably.
Maybe in September.
Or we'll have some good.
More final numbers.
When does the audit start?
Usually in September, usually the Monday after Labor Day.
Okay. Next.
The next item is the SWAS report. We have collected funds for the month of May. That amount was just over $2.3 million, and we are currently seeing an increase of 8.84%.
Excellent.
That's about $12,000 shy of our all-time high, which was last December, so if we can start seeing those $2,000, $2 million numbers every month, that's gonna be a huge impact to the county.
Investment report?
Yes, the final report for your review is the investment report, just showing where excess funds are being invested.
Anything in particular? Look at on there, just the regular?
No, it's just a requirement that I present this at least quarterly, so I just include it every month.
You have anything else, Leanne? Scott? Commissioner comments? Is that there? Yes, Dewey.
And Chairman, thank you. Now that we... Asking this.
Any other Commissioner comments? Public comment? Having none, we have no executive session items, so we'd like to adjourn and come back in two minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, bud. Talk to you afterward.
Through the Public Works and Engineering Services Committee meeting for July the 14th.
Add a gamble, too?
You're not getting any.
My own.
I know.
My own. Said to go engrave it.
You're good now, Mr. Chairman.
All righty. Already having the invocation and pledge, we'll move right down. We have a quorum with two members present. If I'm blind, I'd like. Doing good, Mr. Johnson?
I believe so, Mr. Chairman.
Ten items, let's move right into debate. Blockter, I believe, you're up.
Mr. Pray is gonna present this one to us.
Okay. Uh-oh, must be trouble in the brewing.
If it was good, Matt would've done it himself.
Yeah, Matt would've took it if it was less.
Well, I don't think he was expecting me to be here today, so. Up for your consideration, Angel Order for Southern Civil Solutions. This is for a Martinez Park project. This is additional services that we did not have in the original contract. I'm gonna allow Civil, Southern Civil Solutions to submit to the Army Corps of Engineer, appendix one. This will continue moving this project ahead of schedule. This is something that we consulted with Engineering Services and Stormwater, and we believe that we're gonna need this once the Corps comes in and studies the area.
I did call Mr. Blockter on this, because Amendment Number Four, I was wondering if the cost of additional items were anticipated from the start with the bid that.
No, that, we're still.
Burn gave or whatever, so.
We're still way under budget on his, on the additional services and the entire contract with Southern Civil Solutions. I feel like this is a, a no-brainer for us to proceed with. Texas County, we're still within budget, but within budget.
You consent?
I move. Mr. Clayton's up.
Up for your consideration.
Mic drop.
Very well done. Very well done.
He must be. Leanne, did you mess him up?
I'm sorry for the interruption.
Mr. Clayton, will you use that mic, please?
Ms. Clayton, will you use that mic, please?
Yeah, drop the mic, yeah. Uh, this sewer line replacement was made very rough. Back up. I didn't interpret it. This portion of the Alried Creek is aggravated creek intrusion. Total obstruction caused. Recommend approval. Project be established with a budget of one five hundred thousand.
Eat it, you need it.
Yeah.
I intend to...
How old is that sewer line?
Oof.
Put it in the early...
Move to consent.
Uh, so move.
June twenty-fifth, Columbia County received construction of a twelve-inch water line which will perish. Gateway Boulevard. Will bid was submitted by Kent Southern Corporation, Washington, Georgia. Five hundred and eighty-one. Recommend approval.
Move to consent.
I'll move. Uh, can I ask a question? How are we on Gateway? Talking about January, wasn't it?
Well, that was their goal. The original goal was to have it done by January, but the rain whooped them, it sent them backwards.
Time?
Correction, change order three to the Blair Construction... Offer Creek. Change orders for time extension of lasting delays and... Recommend approval.
Play it now.
Basically.
Move to consent.
I'll move.
L and L Construction, by Force Main. Dollar amount of twenty-eight thousand eight hundred. Cost, correctional board, block. Time extension of other... Recommend approval. Five thousand six hundred and eighty-three. Range completion.
I'll move.
Up for your consideration, an encroachment agreement to... Uh, retaining wall, recommend approval.
So, if we ever need it.
Have to tear it down, it will be...
Move to consent.
Other encroachment agreement from Brandon Wild. Nine line. Round level.
Anything to talk about with that one? They, did they have to tear down a sign and they're putting it back?
It was hit by a car.
That's right, that's...
Move something on that.
We had a setback variance also. They couldn't get far enough away from, to be the five-foot setback for the, from the right-of-way line because they're getting on top of the water line. So, they kinda got stuck in between a, a water line easement and a right-of-way setback. So, y'all have had to approve several.
Okay, I feel like we've talked about this before. Move to consent.
Earl and Powell.
Sir?
Yes, sir. Uh, the first item for your consideration is the renewal of the annual Tax Six Plan for the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. Uh, in order for the county to receive any federal funding assistance, uh, we have to renew the plan annually. Um, county's had a plan in place since March of two thousand fifteen. Uh, no changes on this plan, we're just renewing what we have. That recommends approval.
Question, out of ignorance, what, what is, is... What does it do? Promise to...
Protects people from discrimination, um, based on race, religion, et cetera. Though entities that are a hundred thousand or less must acknowledge it and the entities of a hundred thousand or greater must actually have a plan in place in order to qualify for federal funding.
I'll move.
The next item for your consideration is the approval of, uh, safety lighting at five significant roadway crossings for the Uchi Creek Greenway Trail. Uh, staff has prioritively looked at, um, roadway crossings and out of concern for safety issues. Uh, we've looked into, uh, having some safety lighting added at these crossings. We've reached out to Georgia Power to get, uh, quotes for installation and, uh, annual cost, and we've received those. Staff recommends approval for installation.
Move to consent.
I'll move with a comment. Uh, I've received several calls and I've not had anything to do about it, but where rail crosses, medium few. Guy called me the other day. By the time of the day, and he was pulling a trailer and he come down that hill and... Somebody was stepping across and they got out of the way, but he said, never saw them. Know the blinking lights. I don't know at certain times of day. Be visible and... I know greenways, you cross roads and whatever, that's just a part of it, but I think it's something relatively new for us and maybe people that have never been on greenways. I wouldn't have known that until I was one, on one in Tennessee. Came to a road and it was the exact same thing, you know? Uh, but message out, some sort of way or a kid on a bike, just because they hit that button like a school crossing, no. Button doesn't stop the car. Uh, so it's just, if there's any way we can look at anything, maybe a, another flashing light up the road just a little bit or, or something that maybe somebody's crossing. I, I don't know, just a comment.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into it. The only, one thing we have learned and I say, transportation industry's learned is if you have a flashing light that's always flashing, it's for no purpose.
Right.
So, if you put one further up, it's always flashing.
I, I agree with you.
I started thinking about it too, uh, thought, put a lot of thought into it. Possibly doing a reduced speed zone through there, drop it down to thirty-five instead of forty-five as you approach from both directions. Maybe some rumble strips just to alert people to, to look up. Rumble strips near houses tend to get a lot of complaints, but right there is kind of a, an area that may be a possible location for some rumble strips. Kyle and I'll get out there and we'll, we'll come up with some ways of, of trying to alert the drivers. Educating the people, we might put a sign, you know, push button across, that sign's there, but we can't make them push the button.
Well, the, the greenway looks to be such a positive thing. I mean, people are covered up out there. Hundred degrees and walking everywhere. I... Positive of it if we're... If there's anything we can look at and do, I surely would appreciate it.
Okay, the next item is, uh, indemnity agreement, uh, with Georgia's Department of Transportation for the Washington Road Widening Project. That's a project the county took over, designed and oversaw construction. Uh, typical practice for them to request a indemnity agreement to release the encroachment permit. Uh, we've already had Chris Driver review and he has no comments. Staff recommends approval, executing.
Move to consent.
Move.
The next one is for the approval of a proposal from Pond and Company to begin an interchange justification report. Uh, this is the next step in the process. Uh, we have support from GDI to move forward with interchange justification report. Pond's been helping us along with this project since the beginning and we recommend approving the proposal to execute the, uh, IJR in the amount of ninety-one thousand dollars to Pond and Company.
It matters, but, uh, our packet says interstate justification report. Justification report, does it matter for our purposes?
Matt, you'll have to... Difference?
That's just the title. I don't think the, make sure it's fixed for you.
I mean, I just don't want it to be a...
Yeah, we'll, we'll change that word.
...slayer. But the word is interchange.
Interchange.
Catch.
I'll move.
Alright, the next item is for the Fury's Ferry Road Widening Project. Uh, this is for the purchase of additional stream credits. A couple of commissions ago, we approved initial purchase, but it wasn't the, the full amount that was needed. We finished, uh, purchasing all the credits remaining in our, in our existing bank. This is for purchasing the remaining stream credits needed from the Bath Branch Mitigation Bank. Um, staff recommends purchasing six thousand six hundred seventy-six point zero eight stream credits from Bath Branch in the amount of six thousand three hun- six hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and sixty cent. And this would be reimbursable through to you.
And that is all? Are we gonna be back doing this?
There is, you have one more item in here for wetlands mitigation credits. But that will be all.
Okay. Move to consent.
The next item is for the Fury's Ferry Road Widening Project as well. This is for relocating some, uh, power poles next to the Fury's Ferry Road Fire Station. Uh, Georgia Power requires us to, um, execute a, uh, easement, uh, a Georgia Power easement for these poles. Uh, stacker, staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
The next item is for the Wrightsboro Road and Chamberlain Intersection Improvements, change order number one. We, Beam's, uh, was the low bid on the contract when we first advertised. In the process of getting, going from, uh, in-house forces to actually bringing on Beam's to do the final paving and striping, realized there were some gaps. Um, so instead of our forces doing some of the paving, then Beam's doing the finishing paving, we've realized it's gonna work best if Beam's does all the paving. Base cores, intermediate binder, uh, final service and the striping. So, we reached out to Beam's for additional pricing for that work. Um, so staff recommends approval for change order one, uh, for the project to Beam's in the amount of sixty-three thousand, three hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cent.
I, I talked to Beam's a few minutes ago and they said that if this gets approval, they're hoping to move in in two weeks. Probably take them a week and a half, two weeks to get the thing done. Where traffic's flowing properly, we'll have to final grading and that type of stuff, but traffic will be flowing.
Lights be, purpose of blinking at that point.
Have to get everything built before we can put the lights in the blink mode because the lanes have to be lined up properly. So, once they get out of the way, we'll get in and get the lights going. Blink mode, which has to blink for three days and thirty-day burn-in, but hopefully by, by fourteenth, by the end of the month, lights are in blink mode. Open, maybe the August third, somewhere near.
Oh, that's, uh, something that's been a long, long time and we'll be...
Move to consent.
Uh, the next item for your consideration is what we just discussed regarding the wetlands credits for Fury's Ferry Widening. Staff recommends purchasing the one point one-two wetlands credits required from the ML South Augusta Bank for twenty-one thousand, two hundred and eighty dollars.
And to you, we'll reimburse us for this as well.
Also to you, yes.
Move to consent.
The next item for your consideration is for the acceptance of improvements for the Lampkin Woods Section One, Phase Three project. Staff recommends acceptance of the improvements contingent upon staff's approval of the final plat as built in warranty deed.
Anything interesting? Move to consent.
I'll move.
The last item we have is for the reclassification of the property acquisition manager to pre-construction manager. We've had the property acquisition manager advertised for six months-ish and have had little, um, success in locating a qualified candidate. We've interviewed several. Um, the pre-construction, or the property acquisition, uh, department is a pre-construction function and we realized that we have some needs on the pre-construction side as well. Um, we have a construction department, but we don't have a tremendous amount of help in pre-constructions. So, we can combine those duties, needs from the, for the pre-construction with the property acquisition. Hire a, a, hopefully a professional engineer and, uh, as a pre-construction manager and then property acquisition would fall under that person's purview. So, this would be the reclassification of that position. Uh, currently this position is a contract two. Staff is recommending moving it to a grade thirty-four manager five position. Previous property acquisition manager, uh, was making seventy-six thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-nine cent and the new entry level grade is sixty-five thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars and twenty cent. Staff recommends reclassification. Three on day one.
If we do this, will we be using the third-party property acquisition less?
It don't have any third party.
It will.
I lie. We have third-party, but it's doing things that we can't do. Appraisals, uh, cost to cure type stuff, that stuff we have to hire out to get it professionally done. But then as far as the third-party acquisition services, you're doing every bit of that in the house, that is no more. That turn, that contract was terminated.
End?
End.
That's all I have, thank you.
Uh, no legal... Legal? Not, not only matters, no, not all year, so... But, uh, staff reports, Mr. Clayton, you want to up the speed here on anything?
Pleasure, have our, our budget report.
I was thinking the same thing, Mr. Clayton.
I have for your information, a report that shows our, our...
Uh, I do have a question, Clayton. The, uh, algae that pops its heads, uh, head up, uh, every couple of times a year. So, we, are we past that or we still?
Love it.
Put a little earlier than we know. Fine, but it's... Rashland. I would
Right. How long will that take once? So we will be dealing with this for a couple of years? Right before the algae showed up, I think we were doing work on the lines.
Ice pigging.
Ice pigging, y'all. I got to go on a tour. And poor Billy didn't get to go with us. From Mark England, I see you back there. He took half a day and I got to go see the water utility and wastewater treatment plants, and I got to watch them ice pigging. And if you don't know what I'm talking about or can't even understand the words, ask them and they can explain it to you. It was the hardest thing I've ever seen, so thank you so much for your time, and y'all, they do so much to make sure we have clean water, you know, coming in the house, going out of the house, going in the lake, coming out of the lake. There is a lot that goes on, like, that goes on for us to have clean water, and I really, now that I understand it a little bit more, I certainly appreciate it even more than ever. Thank you so much for your time doing that.
I've never tasted
There's some folks over in my district, they swear every day they can taste it. Every day. Yes.
I've never. My wife does, and she's part-time about it.
Well, I do appreciate everything that y'all's department does, and I am really defensive when people call and complain whatever, and I hear all of that because like, like as, you know, I've been through that process and tour and all, and what all y'all do and what it takes to produce what we have that we just take for granted. It bothers me. And I, like you, I drink water constantly out of my spigot at home, or faucet at home, and I have yet to taste, smell, or notice any
I would, I would assure angle. That water I do.
Thank you very much for that. Commissioner, comment, public comment?
I was gonna say, in addition to touring the water treatment plant, I got to go with Kyle and Steve Exley and Matt and some folks touring, and doing Commissioner Gailey's went with us to go see some intersection improvements, and I appreciate what our engineers and our road folks are doing out there. We got a lot going on, a lot of money being spent, and and it's gonna be good when they all get finished. A lot of them, though.
Chairman, I'll say, and Mr. Clayton.
Okay. Executive session items, we will adjourn at ten twenty-three.